All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. Today, we are joined by Greg and Amanda Killline, founders of Get Oiling. We also have Jess and Colin here from the team, both with furry and human children in tow. So excited to see everybody here today. Oh, my God, look at those puppies. So distracted by babies and puppies, and we all are, aren't we? And we should be because they are wonderful. Guys, so we have a really, really special, exciting trading for you today, brought to you by our guest here, Amanda Erickson of YL Customer Delight. For those of you who see this familiar face, I want to share some love and let people know how much you love YL Customer Delight and how it helps you with Get Oiling. Let everybody know in the comments. We're going to be talking a little bit about what that is. But Amanda is actually here today to share a story that I didn't know. I didn't know if the Get Oiling team knew this. Guys, Amanda is a social media pro, like zero to 40K followers in 18 months, keeps them engaged. And today she's going to show you not only how you can do that kind of thing yourself, but how she does this to keep things going using her Get Oiling system. So Amanda, I'm going to get over here into presenter view. Oh, actually, before I do that real quick, for those of you who are brand new, I'm sorry. We're so excited to have Amanda here today. I'm just bloop. Welcome. This is the weekly work session. We're here to help you get to work, right? We've got training like we have today that Amanda is going to be doing. If you came here for a website review, we will be doing that in the second part of the hour here today. And if you came here looking for help, our team is here right now, and we can answer questions for you in the Q and A. So add questions to the Q and A. If you need support with something specific, and if it's something that requires walking through and having us hold hands and get through things, we'll have time to do that at the close of our call today. So thank you. We're glad you're here. Let's get to work. And Amanda, let's, let's hear what you've got to say, because I know you've got some training slides and everything ready to go.
All right. Well, you guys can hear me, right? Yes. Okay. Thank you so much for having me. It's good to see the team. I think there's a couple of new team members I haven't met yet. So hello to you guys. A little bit about my backstory, I have been with Young Living for almost 11 years. I got into it for help with an autoimmune problem that had been gone ongoing. I got, I found the help that I had been looking for with Young Living, and I've been living symptom-free from that autoimmune disease for about 10 and a half years now. Also have overcome five years of infertility. I was given by a reproductive endocrinologist, I was given a 5% chance of a successful pregnancy, and we ended, and that was with fertility treatment. And my husband and I have two naturally conceived little boys. So when it comes to Young Living, I am 100% about the product and the quality. See, to seal the quality of the product, because it literally changed my life. So that's my Young Living story. Way before that, back before it was really a thing, I was in social media marketing. I worked with a company that partnered with bloggers and influencers. In fact, I actually, I actually was with this company before Instagram was even a thing. Like it was, the bloggers that I was working with were not even on Instagram. And I was required with my job to get on Instagram. And I was like, I don't want another social media platform. And this one's probably not going anywhere anyway. So why do I need an account? And boy, was I wrong. But I was a very slow convert to Instagram. So that's, so it's been a while since I've been working in, in, in social media and in marketing. And the whole point of, of that company that I worked with was to sell products in a very authentic and genuine way, instead of just like slapping a hashtag ad label on your post and being like, hey, have you ever tried this? And you know, like 80% of your followers are like, I've never even heard her talk about a problem that's related to this. I've never even heard her mention anything related to this at all. And, and it comes across as very inauthentic. And so my heart behind social media engagement in general is very much about being very genuine, very authentic, and connecting with the people that you know and you have a desire to serve. And there is a difference between selling someone something and serving someone. And they often do in business, in heart-centered business, go hand in hand. But people can tell when you are in it to sell them something, and they can tell when you're in it to serve them. And when you are in it to serve them, they want what you have. And so that's what we're going to talk about today. So fast forward to after, you know, years of infertility, after doing the Young Living business for a while. A couple of years ago, my husband and I, we were raising little, little bitty boys. They were, you know, toddlers at the time. And we were sharing some of our, what we were learning about parenting. Also, this is slightly related, slightly related. We were also foster parents for a while. So like, we were sharing what we had learned as foster parents and how that was playing into parenting toddlers. And, and people were sharing stuff from our personal page. And it started to make me a little bit uncomfortable because, you know, because my children's stories are theirs. And I, I do want to share some of their stories, but I was very cautious about wanting to overshare and also protect their identity and protect, you know, protect our family. And so I just started a Facebook page and started sharing on this, on this business page, on a public, public-facing Facebook business page. And my mom and like three friends followed, and I didn't really do very much with it. And that was in like October of 2018. I just, you know, made the page name. I stuck a picture on it. I didn't really do anything with it until April of 2019. And in April of 2019, my husband and I were like, you know what, I think God is really, that's, you know, part of how we view life, but God is really doing something through us, and we need to be more intentional. And so what I'm about to walk you through are the exact steps that we took to grow our Facebook page. And, and I want to share, and it's very, it is very heart-centered, which is kind of a click, can, can sound cliche. Like, take that cliche feeling out and be like, heart-centered. It's not about focusing on what my heart is sharing. It is focusing on what the heart of your target audience needs. And so when we think about heart-centered, like shift the focus from your own heart to the hearts of those that you're influencing, and it kind of takes it, oh, it gives it a little bit more of a different and deeper meaning. All right. So Coach Ashley, I'm from the South. I was about to say Miss Ashley. Coach Ashley. I need to know what I need to do to share my screen. Oh, and I can't hear you.
Sorry, I was muted. And I'm fine with Miss Ashley girl. I grew up in Alabama. Whatever. Yeah. Hey, that's fine. Okay. So are you using, what are you using for your?
I'm on a desktop on my Apple.
Well, yeah, but is it like, like a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, it's a PowerPoint. Yeah.
Okay. So what you're going to want to do is have that open, hit the share screen button in Zoom. And then when you get into your keynote, press play and you should be good.
Okay, I'm not seeing the share screen button.
So in your Zoom screen.
There it is. It's actually highlighted. I see it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Do you have, if you hit share, did it pop up a thing?
Yes, and I hit okay. It didn't do anything.
Oh, no. So you have to select one of the things that shows up and select the one that is your keynote.
Oh, I have to grant access through my security. Hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Let me pull this up real quick.
Okay. No worries. You guys, if you're loving what Amanda's sharing, no, it's fine. It's fine. We can, we can chat right now while you're getting that figured out. All right. So there are some folks who are interested in your social handles. You guys, if you're in our Facebook group, Amanda's in there, right? So facebook.com/getoiling, our groups, forward slash Get Oiling Online, you can find Amanda in there. We can have a thread about this. I got some folks interested in what you did with your autoimmune stuff. Y'all are, y'all are loving this. And you know what? I think there was one particular insight that was just so powerful there, that that from the heart, we focus so much on what we want and not what on other people, what actually works, which is focusing on what they want, right? I think that that is just beautiful insight and a, and an insight that everybody should be absorbing right now. How are we doing, Amanda?
I don't know. It's not, it's not coming up. And like, I clicked on the, on the unlock button, and then it doesn't seem to.
Do you want to email it to me? And then I can go through it and you can narrate it?
Yeah, except it's giving me like the little scroll button right now. Okay. Let's see. Well, you know what I'll do until it decides it's ready, until it shows up, I'll just go ahead and share, and y'all can look at me.
Okay.
For the moment. So, and I do apologize because it is a little bit, it is a little bit easier to follow something and take notes from something that's written. But I do have, I do have something for you guys that, that I'm going to follow along, and y'all will be able to do this. So my Facebook page that I'm talking about is called Flourishing Homes and Families. I launched it on April 25th, 2019 with three followers. And today we have over 37,600 followers. Our monthly reach is about 3 million. And I did not focus on Instagram until last October. I was, I had the handle and I would sometimes post and sometimes not. But we started, we really started being active and intentional on Instagram in October, and we have right, just over 5,500 followers on Instagram. One thing that I do want to say is that I have never, not one time paid for advertising on Facebook. So every single one of my follows is an authentically called to sung to ideal customer. I did not pay, I haven't paid Instagram. I haven't paid Facebook. These are people that have found me completely naturally and completely authentically, and have chosen to follow me based on someone else's recommendation and/or based on our content. So I think that that is, I think that that's something to be proud of and to be something to strive for, to, to present content. Number one, to present content that people want to share. But number two, to be very tuned into who your ideal customer is. Our content is shared and tagged multiple, multiple times a day. Last week, two weeks ago, I think we had one, one post that was shared almost 13,000 times. So that is, that's how we have grown our audience is from people wanting to share it. In the early days, which I'm going to tell you how to get, what the early days looked like. In the early days, we were sharing content that we knew resonated with our ideal customer, our target audience. And so they naturally, as soon as they knew about my page, as soon as they knew, you know, that we were there kind of for public consumption, they started sharing without me ever asking them to share. So the first thing that I want to talk about is knowing your target demographic. This is also called your ideal customer, your avatar, your bat signal. If you've been around here a while, you have probably heard at least one of those terms. I like, I've always used target demographic just from way back in my day. So that's what naturally comes out of, out of my mouth. So that's what I'm using. And when I talk about knowing them, I recommend knowing them very, 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 very intimately. You want to know, this, this was my, this was how I created my target audience. You want to know how old they are. You want to know what their felt needs are. You want to know what their actual needs are. But you want to get very specific about who they are as a person. And this is the example that I like to use. You want to know, do they have a dog? Do they dress their dog? Do they feed their dog boutique dog food? And is their dog named Fifi? Now, some of you guys might be like, wow, that is way more specific than I have ever thought about. But here's why this is important. A 35-year-old woman who has a dog that she dresses in a pink tutu and it's named Fifi, and it eats boutique dog food, is going to be a completely different target audience than somebody that has a pit bull named Roscoe, who is a, you know, 48-year-old ex-military person. Okay. So when I say you want to know if they have a dog, that doesn't really narrow your talk, your target audience. You want to get as super, super narrow as you can. So I created, for me, I created an ideal customer, and I gave her a name, and her name was Beth Anne. And she was a lot like me a few years ago. And she had, you know, she had kids that were like three years apart, and she was a stay-at-home mom. And she had a little bit of a side business that she earned a little bit of income from because her husband told her if she was going to keep up with her bow-making hobby, she was going to have to start paying for it out of her own budget. And so she started selling them on, you know, Facebook Marketplace and Etsy. And when I, when I shared this, when I shared this presentation before, like I have a picture of her, and people are all like, wow, that's Beth Anne. And they think she's like my real friend that I know in person. And Beth Anne is completely made up, and it's a stock photo of a mom and a little girl. Okay, but I knew Beth Anne. And so every single thing that I post on our page is posted to Beth Anne. You know, like I'm speaking to this person. And so all of the people that have a lot in common with Beth Anne, they come to me because I'm speaking to Beth Anne. Okay. All right. So how do you even come up with, I'm going to have to look at my phone because I've got my notes on my phone here too. And how do you even come up with who, you know, such a narrow and very targeted ideal customer? How do you, how do you come up with it? Well, you are going to ask questions, like ask yourself questions about them. You want to know, you know, what are their felt need? You know, the, the big ones that you probably maybe have already thought of, like, how old are they? Do they have kids? Do they work from home? Like, those are kind of, those are kind of obvious, I guess, maybe. I think of them as being obvious. But you're going to want to be like, what are their felt needs? And a lot of times, we don't think about somebody's felt needs. We think about, you know, they're, they're suffer, or not suffering, but like they have ADHD and they need help with organizing. Well, that may be true, but their felt need is that they often feel like a failure because they don't invite people over to, they don't reciprocate invitations to their home because it's always messy, because they don't know how to organize. And so their felt need is loneliness and somebody to accept them in the, the way that they are. And you want to speak to that felt need. And speaking to that felt need will, it will draw people to you. It's, it seems, I like to say, it sings the heart song of, of a person. Because yeah, we can give them a fix. We can, we can give them a how to organize your home and 10 easy steps, you know? But when you really connect with someone with their felt need and something that is very internalized and very personal, and you speak to that, and you call them out of the negative part of that and into the authentic person that they're designed to be, they're going to want to be a part of whatever you're doing. So ask yourself questions about their felt needs. Ask yourself questions about their family. Like, what are they passionate about? What makes them laugh? What, and those are really good ones, because if you, I lean towards, I have a very strong four wing on the Enneagram. So I lean more towards being, you know, having a lot of emotional and very serious and, you know, sing their heart song. And it's really important, if you, if you have that mentality too, like you want to know what makes them laugh. People love to laugh. And this world needs more laughter right now. And so what makes them laugh? Do they laugh at, you know, jokes about politics? Or do they laugh about jokes about their messy house? Or do they laugh about jokes about raising teenagers? Like, those are the things that you want to know. What makes them laugh? And people will, will be drawn to that. What are their passions? And their passions may be very similar to yours, but they, they may also be really different. And you want to know what the differences are and how you can speak to that through your, through your mutual passions. So those are a few questions. I have this written down for you guys that you'll be able to get with, to get as well. So make, make yourself a list of what, you know, ask yourself questions about this person and write them down. Like make, make notes. These are the things that, that they're passionate about, and these are our shared mutual passions. The next thing that you're going to want to do is on your personal Facebook page, you are going to want to ask questions to find out who on your page is already one of your ideal customers. And these are going, I'm going to use an example. And if you are, let's say that you are, are starting a homestead, you know, on your three-quarter acre, acre lot. And you want to know, you, or that's your target audience is like urban homesteaders. Okay, you're going to post a question on your personal Facebook page or in your Instagram stories, and it's going to say something like, hey, have you ever read the book Raising Backyard Chickens? And what, what was the most helpful tip? I'm, we're talking about getting chickens. The people who respond, and this is if your target audience is, you know, urban homesteading. The people who respond are going to be the most likely to be one of your ideal customers or your target audience. Okay, they, these are the people that you're friends with, and you may not have even known that they ever had chickens. And maybe they don't have chickens right now, but they know a lot about it. Those, those people will be able to sort of feed and encourage your target audience. So you're going to want to ask questions like that. Here, I'll give you guys a couple of other, couple of other ideas. All right. So another one would be, which is better, this or that? So let's say, you know, if you have, you know, if you have a 14-month-old and you're trying to figure out about sleep training, you could say, hey, mom friends, I have a question about sleep training. Does anyone know, you know, what are your thoughts? Which is better, this approach or this approach? You know, these are the two that I'm looking at. Now, maybe you already know for you that, you know, approach option B is really where your target audience is going to lean. And so the people that answer A, they may or may not be your target audience. They might someday be your target, target audience. But all of the people that answer option B are already your target audience. They're already your target demographic. Another one would be, what's an, what's a, what's the best alternative to, what's the best alternative to spraying weed killer on my flower beds? I have, in my flower beds, I have some little, a few herbs in my flower beds, and I cannot do weed killer. What's the best alternative? Because I cannot do the weed killer. So that's going to help you pull out from your group, the people who are a little more natural-minded or who have options, who know a thing or two about gardening. So these are the types of questions that you're going to ask. Open-ended questions that are directed and speaking directly to the people on your, on your personal page that are your target, target audience. And those people, you are going to either want to take a screenshot or write them down. Those people you are going to want to remember because they will become your first 100, 150 followers, your ideal customer. And they are the people that when you start sharing, the people have been building relationship with them, and they will be like, oh, I'm totally sharing this. I already trust her. I want to share her page right now. Brand new page. I'm sharing it. I already know. All right. The second thing, so that's on your personal page. Ask those types of questions two or three times a week and, and, and keep notes. And if you are disorganized, take screenshots, put them on your phone, create an album that says target audience, and save them all in there until you are ready to, you know, actually use that information. The second thing to do is to join groups that are related to your target demographic. And this, for me, my target audience was parents who wanted to parent differently than how they were raised, that wanted to have more of a positive or peaceful parenting approach. So I joined, you know, positive discipline groups. I joined peaceful parenting groups. I joined gentle parenting groups. I joined gentle Christian parenting groups. I joined Raising Stronghold Children through gentle parenting groups. Okay, so any groups that you can find that are related to your target audience, you're going to want to go ahead and join those. I just want to say, if you are listening and you're like, okay, this is about to get super spammy. I can tell it isn't. I did this. I have never spammed anyone, and it actually fosters connections that will probably become lifelong friendships. Okay, so I just want to try and break that concern down. So here's an example. If your target audience is RV living or small home living, you're going to want to join Facebook groups that are all about living in an RV or traveling. You know, living full-time on the road. Don't forget about smaller niche groups. So for example, if you are a homeschool mom or you have toddlers, you're not yet homeschooling, but you are planning on living in an RV and traveling, you are going to want to go ahead and join groups about homeschoolers who RV. And maybe that isn't exactly you, but those are going to be people that are probably going to fit into your, into your target audience. And then your, find your target demographic questions, like I shared a few minutes ago. You're going to want to start asking those in the groups. Now, a little bit of etiquette, pay attention to the rules, because some groups, you know, depending on what type of a group they are, they don't want you asking questions the moment you get in. They want you to wait three weeks, or they want you to wait a month, or, you know, whatever their rules are. Honor the group rules and know that this is a long game plan. Okay? So if you join a group and you're like, wow, they don't want me to post for three weeks, honor that. When, when you honor the rules, people will trust you. And the admins and the moderators will see, wow, she followed the rules. She had a really good question and she waited, or he waited, and, and you will be on good terms right off the bat with the admins and the moderators because you followed the rules. So do pay attention to the rules. But you're going to want to start asking those questions. So even if you've shared them on your personal page, those questions, get in those groups and ask really similar questions. Now, another bit of etiquette is going to be, don't ask identical questions in multiple groups because there's a really good chance that there are people in the groups that are in the same other groups that you're in. Okay, people that are looking for help with autoimmune issues are in 18 autoimmune groups. Okay, so if you join an autoimmune group and you ask about, you know, vitamin B methylated or not, you know, don't ask that same question in 11 groups because that will look spammy. Okay, be selective in the groups that you post in and rephrase your questions and come across looking for genuine help or asking, or having genuine curiosity. And that will help, that will help you not look spammy in the groups. But those are the questions. And the people that answer on your, on your questions, those are going to be, they're going to go into your file, and however you keep your notes on who your future target audience members are going to be. Now, another tip is in groups to help your post gain traction is to comment right away. And if you know someone in the group, tag a person you know in the group or tag an admin or a moderator and say, hey, do you have any insight to this? I would love to know what you think about this. So if you want to get traction on your post quickly, go ahead and ask, go ahead and ask the question and then tag, tag someone right away, and that will bring traffic to your post. The other thing is, it's just the way that social marketing or social networking works is you can ask a controversial question. If you have the emotional fortitude to deal with that and to deal with very strong feelings and opinions about a controversial question, you can do that too. And that will totally drive people to your question, and it'll get people, you'll be able to see the people that agree with you or have the same position as you. It'll get them, you'll be able to see who those people are. All right. The second thing, the second thing, I don't even know what number I'm on. Do you join multiple groups? Do be your first own comment and do reply to the questions. Do reply to the answers on your question. At the very least, thank someone for taking the time to respond to you. It's just a common courtesy. It goes forgotten on social media a lot, and it will make you stand out if you respond, even with just a basic thank you. Now, the goal is to find your target audience, is to keep the conversation going. So if somebody answers you and, and they're like, the, the answer is just kind of off the wall, you know intuitively, it's not going to be a, you know, it's not going to be a good fit for your target audience. Just tell them, thank you so much for taking time. Give them a heart emoji. But if somebody gives a really thoughtful answer, follow that answer up with another question. You want to keep them talking. People love to share what they know. They love to share about themselves. They love to sort of come across as an authority or an expert on something. And for anyone else, that's like a very strong yellow, they love to help people. Okay? So keep the questions going. Follow up their answers with questions so that the conversation just kind of stays very in motion. Naturally, a lot of those conversations are going to wind up going to a private message. And, and part of that is because you do want to, you know, be very mindful of the culture of the Facebook groups, people, admins might be like, okay, you got 50 answers. We're going to shut this off so other posts get, you know, can be seen. But what you want to do is you'll be like, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to send you a private message. I had one more follow-up question. You take it to private message, and you asked your question. And I just want to say, like, this is not at all about Young Living. Or if you have another product, it is not at all about a product. It is genuinely about getting to know people and to build a mutually trusting relationship with them. So you want to keep authentic conversations going. You want to be friendly. Your goal is to build, build actual relationships, not to sell a product. And here's the part that some people are going to go like, wait, what? You are going to send friend requests to people that you make solid connections with, if they don't friend you first. So if you are very private on Facebook, if you have a very, if you have a lot of privacy concerns on Facebook, there are ways that you can do this and maintain all of your, all of your privacy. You can create a second account and not share pictures of your kids, but share everything else about your life. I mean, do what you feel comfortable with. I recognize and I honor the concern and the natural internal fear that some, that some of us, including myself, have had about what if, you know, you get capped. um, internal fear that some, that some of us, including myself have had about what if, you know, you get catfished online? What if that person isn't really who, who they come across as? That does happen, but the vast majority of the people that you're connecting with, I mean, by a long shot in these groups are going to be real people that have the concerns that you're actually asking about. So just be mindful of that. Um, in your, in the groups that you're in, another way to really build connection and to gain trust is to be a cheerleader. Share people on, on, on other posts, answer questions that you can answer. If you can't answer, tell them like, I really admire your vulnerability and asking about, you know, how to let go of trauma from your childhood or whatever. Like if you're not a therapist, don't give an answer that's not, is not going to help them, but you can be like, man, I one hundred percent relate to that. I've had that same question. I really admire your vulnerability. The world needs people that are willing to speak up. So you can be a cheerleader in the groups as well. Okay, so you're going to send friend requests. If they don't friend you first, I will say for David, for my husband and me, we were both in the group uh, in the multiple groups that we ran and we both just started getting friend requests and we were like, whoa, like we knew this was our goal, but we weren't really expecting it. Um, as it turns out, people are like driven to connect with people that have a shared struggle. Okay, there is that natural camaraderie and people are eager to connect. And you guys, you did it at the beginning of this, right? You were like, wait, I want to know about your autoimmune. Okay, you're already asking me questions and you're like, please share more. That's what's going to happen in the groups that you join. People are going to be like, wait, you have something. I want to know. Please share more. Is it okay if I send you a friend request? And you're going to be like, yes, it's more than okay. That was, you know, that was kind of what I was working for, you know? Um, so ah, back to your personal Facebook page. Facebook offers the option of creating a segmented list. You can customize a friends list there now. I, I wish my, I wish this was working, but I'll tell you the website. You can Google that, that says how to create, like type into Google, how to create a segmented list on Facebook. The website that worked the best for me is lifewire.com slash create a custom Facebook friends list. Okay, what, um, Coach Ashley, would you type? Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to copy this real quick, I think, and I'll type it in there for you. Into the chat. Let me flip over just real quick because I want you guys to be able to have that easily, hopefully.
Yeah, definitely drop that into the chat.
Chat.
And, and guys, just so you know, and, and Amanda, am I clear on this? This, uh, there's a download that you're giving away and you're kind of talking, you've been talking through the process
Absolutely.
right now. So, um, I just want to give you guys a sneak peek and we're going to be sharing a link with you as well. Uh, as to, uh, where you can get access to this whole step-by-step magic situation that Amanda is sharing with you right now. Oh my gosh, are you guys loving this? By the way, this is so good. Amanda, this is just gold that you're giving away here. And I don't know if you guys are noticing just how big and comprehensive this download is. Uh, I am so excited. Look at this. You even got like what to do on each day and, and what your Facebook page should be set up like, and there's so much in here and you guys, Amanda's giving this away to you for free. We're going to be giving you a link to this. Uh, so, okay, I just wanted to, to do a quick, just, just to shout out you guys. This is amazing stuff here. Um, and you got the link there, LifeWire. Here, I can share the screen real quick and show. And if you're able, I don't know, we're probably a little too far along at this point to try to, uh, like,
Oh, I think I sent it to panelists on accident instead of the group, the whole one. Yes, this is the page. That's what you're going to look for. Yeah. Oh, Coach Ashley, you're awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
So the point of the segmented or the custom friends list is that you can add the people that you join from groups. And I did see somebody commented like, you need to be aware of the rules. Um, in your Facebook groups of sending friend requests and I absolutely always advocate for following the rules. Following the rules in somebody else's group builds trust. It cultivates trust. And it's just plain old what you're supposed to do. Okay? It's not your group. You don't get to break their rules. If you want to have a different group, then create a different group. But if you're in someone else's group, follow the rules. Um, so this point of the segmented list is that Facebook gives you the opportunity to have a custom friends list and you can take all of these connections that you've made and maybe right now it's three or maybe right now it's fifty-seven. Whatever the number is, put them all into the segmented friends list and then the content that you share, um, that is for your target audience. You're going to share not to your, to everyone. You're going to share it just to your segmented list and that tells Facebook. She wants this person to see this. We are going to show this to this person. So for example, let's go back to RV living. Okay? Your grandma, who you love dearly and who is genuinely interested in your life and adventure of living in an RV. Um, she absolutely should be able to see your posts about your family and what life is like, but posts that are designed to cultivate and educate and inspire and make your target audience laugh, she doesn't need to see. Your target, you need to make sure your target audience sees that. And so when you use the segmented list or the custom friends list, Facebook says, hey, we need to show this to these people. And there is a much higher chance of them actually seeing the content that you want them to see. It's a sort of a workaround on Facebook al-algorithms. Um, that will also, also you're sharing to people that are very likely to either like or heart or comment on your stuff, which increases your, the algorithms even better because then Facebook's like, oh, everybody who's seeing this is liking it. And so it keeps showing your content, whether it is segmented or not to your target audience. Okay, so that's just a little bit of a hack and you're going to want to go ahead and use that. The other benefit of that, and, and here was one for us, is that my husband and I were sharing about gentle and peaceful parenting and not everybody is on board with that. Like some people are not ready to, um, make a paradigm shift and we don't want to make them mad. And we don't want them to feel judged and we don't want them to be like, I gotta hide all her stuff because all I ever see is her gentle parenting stuff. And so when you are sharing your content just to your segmented list, you are also honoring the people that really don't care by not showing it to them. And you're able to maintain relationships with them that, in a way that honors them and also serves them. Um, because you're not pushing something on them that they really aren't interested in. So that's just another, that's just being mindful of other people and, you know, having that heart center and it's being focused on other people. So that segmented list is what is going to become your very first, um, ideal customers, your very first followers on your Facebook page, your very first heart, you know, list of target audience people. And the other thing that I want to say is to trust the process. Um, it is not a, for us, it was a, it was a very, very quick process. Um, but we had some of the, some of the Facebook groups I was in, we had been members of for two or three years. Um, because we had gone in, look genuinely looking for information and we had already asked many questions with, without trying to build, you know, a Facebook page or anything. And so we were already in there and we already had some connections. Um, they were not strategic, we didn't know they were strategic. Um, we had not planned to do it that way, but we were already in some groups. And so when I asked a question, I, I was getting a lot of answers from people that already trusted me that I already trusted. So I do want to, I do want to put that out there and make that clear, but the process, it absolutely works. It absolutely connects you to the people that you're supposed to be connected with. Um, and for some, it's going to be a super quick, um, getting to your first one hundred people. And for others, it might, you know, it might take a little bit longer, but the process absolutely works and being consistent and being authentic are really two of the most important things. Um, so a couple of things about sending friend requests, do be safe. Um, I knew this was, I knew this was coming up. I couldn't remember all of it. Be safe. This is my personal rule. I do not send friend requests or accept friend requests from people that their account is less than two years old. Um, at this point, it's probably closer to five years old because there, most people that I, that why would want to be connecting with me have probably been on Facebook for a while. Um, they must have a photo of their family that is public, either their profile picture, their header, their public album. For me, it's family because that's my target audience. Um, if it is just like, if their profile picture is a butterfly, I will send them messenger, like I'll answer questions in Messenger, but I'm not going to send them a friend request. I have to see that they're a real, actual person. I would really want to see a picture of their family somewhere. Um, also, if they don't have their picture of their family up, you can go into your groups and search them. Like, did they ever post a picture of their, you know, of their kids and see if you can find a picture of their child and, or their family in a private group too, because some people are very, very strict on that. Um, and then I am, they must be in at least two of the same groups that I am in. That helps kind of reinforce that they really are looking for the same kind of things that I'm looking for and they're not just a a troll in one group. And then my ideal is that we have at least one or two mutual friends. It doesn't always happen, um, but that, when, especially when we were starting out, it was really important to me that we had one or two mutual friends. And then absolutely, this is for me personally, no profanity, no nudity and no heavy politics on their page. Um, those just are not part of my target audience at all. And I, those are things that I don't want up in my newsfeed. And so those were things, again, I'd be happy to dialogue with them, you know, in Messenger, but I'm not going to send them a friend request. So have your boundaries, like make boundaries that you are comfortable with. And maybe your target audience is, uh, does have a, a, a specific political leaning. So that would not be a boundary that you want to draw, draw, draw boundaries that are unique to you and your target audience and are important to you and that you are comfortable with. So, um, when you, oh, this was another thing. I only sent friend requests or accepted friend requests of people that I had had multiple conversations, repeated conversations with either in the group or in, or in Messenger. I did not just friend people that I had not had any connection with because again, the goal was to have authentic, genuine connections with people that were, you know, we trust each other. And so I'm not just going to accept a friend request from somebody that I, I don't know who they are. They don't really know who I am. Um, I also sent a, a personal message. If I sent a friend request and had not had a conversation in Messenger yet, it was all in a group. I sent a personal message and it was like, hey, thank you so much for answering my question or thanks for the feedback that you provided or thanks for the insight you gave. Um, I just wanted to let you know, I sent a friend, friend request and I hope you have a great, you know, hope you have a great day or I hope things are easier for you or whatever it is. Again, your goal is relationship, not selling them an oil or a product. Um, and those people, as you, as you add them to your friends list, be sure and put them in your segmented list. Do it right away. Um, because that means they will keep seeing the things that are important for them to see. Um, all right, I'm going to actually skip a little bit of this because it's about how it, it's visuals of how to set up a public Facebook page. Um, and I have that in the download that you guys can get with sort of a, a diagram of what you want it to look like. Um, there are a couple of things that, um, there are a couple of things that I wanted, yeah.
Hey, um, I think it would be amazing to have you back for a part two of how all of that is set up if you're open to it. There is a couple of, if you're cool, there's a couple of questions here. I think, uh, segmented lists may be kind of a new thing uh, to some folks here and it's clearly something that you're using. So, um, there were a couple of questions that came through. Uh, so Dorothy asked if you can add people to different segmented lists. So once they're on one, they can be on another.
Yeah, totally. So I actually, um, like because, so I'm going to use my example. I mean, I just want to be open with you guys. I'm in Young Living. I have, um, Young Living, I have a segmented list for other Young Living members because those are the people that like, I love the stuff that they post and I want to, I love the words they use or I love the pictures they use. I, I want to make sure I see their stuff because I trust them and I want to learn from them. But I also have a business for Young Living people. So I also have a segmented list for like prospects for YL Customer Delight basically. And some of those people are on both of those segmented lists because gosh, I would absolutely love to have them as a customer too. Um, but I, I also have the list because I want to learn from them and I want to be sure I see, you know, what they have. So yes, totally can be on more than one segmented list. Um, yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, you're good. You're good. Uh, so, uh, do you have a separate Facebook group to do this or can I just use my personal page? Heather asks.
Okay. What we did is we did a public page. There are, if you've been with, if you've been learning with the Get Oiling team and some of their other partners, there are some people that recommend doing all of your education in a group. That's your, um, you know, kind of your pool of prospects. This is what I, this is what I have learned. There is no one right way to do this. There is no one right way to do social media marketing. The most important thing is that you do what is, uh, what works for you and your family best and what you are most comfortable with. So for my husband and me, our page has, is a lot about education and giving people tools to be less angry and less reactive with their children. We want that to get to as many people as possible. So we chose to do a, a Facebook page. Um, we, it, and it has worked really, really well for us. We also do have a group that would be sort of like our prospects group and you guys, I have taken Martha's training. I have listened to all kinds of trainings about groups. I suck at groups. Okay? Like groups are not my thing. I have them. I love the people in, in them. I do not excel at nurturing relationships on, in groups, but I am really good at nurturing relationships and dialoguing and getting connections with people on, on pages, on public facing pages, and it works for me. So I would say if you don't know which one works for you, if you're starting out, you can do both and see which one you naturally um, are kind of pulled to or which one your target audience is naturally target, you know, naturally drawn to and see which one works and then focus on it. And my husband and I, we manage our page together and we're actually like in the process of how in the world do we get our, like, how do we get our group like revitalized? Because we have it, we have members and we just kind of don't, it's not that we don't know what to do. We know exactly what to do, but it's, it, it does not come as naturally, you know? And so we want to try and create a plan that works for our family and we still have little boys at home and we have to put boundaries on our time. So maybe now is not the right time. Yeah.
Wow. We had a question, uh, from Paulina a little while ago as well. Um, she said she's doing, she's joined different groups based on her bat signal and, um, she's asking questions and answering questions, but it never leads anywhere. She's sending friend requests, personal messages, if they do interact with the answers, she feels like she gets more interaction when she follows people on Instagram and inter, and interact there. Like, does she's,
Right.
her question is, am I missing something on Facebook or is it just that, you know, Instagram works better for me? I think maybe another question for you specifically is, how long did it take you to kind of figure out how to do this question? Process that you knew that a question was a good question to ask? Like what, what was that process like for you?
Right. So, um, again, just in case you guys missed it, I had been in a, in like two or three of my target audience groups for a couple of years. So I was already familiar with which questions got a lot of answers or which questions many, many people were eager to comment on. Um, so I was able to have a little bit of strategy in asking my questions. Um, if you're brand new to your bat signal or your target audience into those groups, maybe hang out for a month and, you know, like set a timer in the evening and say, I'm going to spend twenty minutes going through these groups. Go back, look, look at the last month of, of content and posts and see what other questions have gotten a lot of answers and have gotten a lot of discussion. Because it's not so much that you want a lot of answers as you want a lot of conversations. Um, so you want to, like, if you see a post that has sixty-seven responses, you want to go and be like, whoa. All right, what happened here? Because there, you know, either sixty-seven people all needed to answer this question or else there was some great conversation going on compared to a post that got like five answers. So do, you know, be, be an investigator. Go see, go find out like what, what we're, what we're generating conversation and also you said Paulina asked that, I think, um, Paulina, like make the goal not so much asking a question, like the question is the tool, the goal is the conversation. And so, um, you know, if you're asking a question and they aren't really going, going anywhere, um, use that as a learning opportunity, like, it may not be that you're asking the wrong questions. It may be that maybe you're misreading when somebody's really done, you know, dialoguing with you. Maybe they're really eager to continue dialoguing, but they didn't respond for, you know, two days and, and you took that as, oh, they're done with the conversation when what really happened is, you know, their five-year-old fell out of a tree and they had to go get a cast, you know? So like, don't assume that the conversation was intentionally over. You can always come back and follow up. Um, and you could always come back and be like, man, thank you so much for your advice, for your answer, or I really, I've really been thinking about what you said about this. Um, did you read any, you know, did you read any, have you read any books that are related to this topic? You know, ask for recommendations. I mean, people, people are generally eager to share what they do know. So if you can think of a question that keeps the conversation going and invites them to share, you know, what they do know about it, just think of a question and, you know, and follow up. Don't assume that they want the conversation to be over. If these are your bat signal people, probably they are going to be more than, more than willing to keep having a conversation.
I love it. I love it. So I do want to, we've got another question from Dana and then I want to make sure that we have a chance to talk about YL Customer Delight and if you've got, um, as well, just, you know, because we are, we're coming close to the top of the hour here. If you've got any insights specifically, because I know you shared with me that you're using Get Oiling texting
Yes.
keep these people engaged that are on, that are on Facebook, right? So I had one question from Dana and So one question from Dana, and then if we could talk about that real quick and then you guys, you gotta learn about YL Customer Delight while we're here. Cause it's a thing you can plug into your Good Oil link system and use. And we got people in the comments here who love it, who are talking about it.
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Yeah. So Dana says confirming, we use the question post on our profile to find prospects for our bat signal and put those in the segmented group.
That is exactly right. Um, that is exactly right. Dana, the goal of that is to find out who of the people that you are already friends with might also be your target audience. Um, because, and here's the thing, here's the thing, the people that you are already friends with, they are a goldmine. If you have, even if you only have three or four, okay? Like, take the perspective of, wow, I have 500 friends and only three or four of them are really my ideal customer. You have three or four people that know you, that trust you, that follow you, that are interested in your life, that love your family, that love your kids, that want, that they know you, they trust you. You don't have to work hard to gain their trust. They already have that with you. You already have three or four, like you have those people, put them in your segmented list and be like, thank you Lord, thank you universe. These are my people and I already, I already have them and then like love on them. You know, love on them, love, serve them, find out how you can serve them, check on them, ask if they have kids, ask about their kids. Because I will tell you as a mom, like I do love it when people checking on me, but when people ask about my kids, it is like, you care about my family. That is one of the biggest things. So that's another, that's another hack too. If you don't know what to ask me, like, hey, how are your kids doing? Have they gone back to school? Or do you love home? Are they loving homeschooling? Or, you know, ask about their kids. My parents love to talk about their kids.
I love it. I love it. I love it. Uh, so a quick question from Ilka, difference between a Facebook group and a Facebook page? You don't have to join a Facebook page. It is available for the public to see, right?
Yep. Yep. Absolutely. Yeah.
Excellent. All right. So share with us.
Sure.
Um, you know, just so everybody here who's using Get Oiling, I can know kind of what you're doing to keep these people engaged.
Okay. So we grew our Facebook page. It was very successful. Um, I, we shared a little bit of Young Living stuff on it, but it was more like these, you know, man, my kid's having a tantrum. Thank you Lord for stress away or peace and calming or whatever. Okay. We were not plugging Young Living on our page. We were very intentional about that. We did not want to. What we did do is we created, we, we have a Get Oiling website that I love and it's customized. And, um, I created three lead magnets. One of them is how to tame your triggers. One of them is like a parenting discipline evaluation. There, it is one page. There's nothing else related to it. The other two are how to take, tame your, transform your triggers, your parenting triggers and how to stay calm when your kids can't. And both of those have a tiny mention of essential oils in this, in the like practical steps. Okay. So how to stay calm when your kids can't. Mindful breathing, intentional breathing is very helpful for your nervous system. So I have a thing in there and then I say, you know, Amanda's tip is use a calming essential oil like stress away or peace and calming, Young Living specific, not just lavender. And, um, you know, and, and use those when you're doing your intentional mindful breathing because it will help. You know, it'll help settle, settle your body and maybe your kids will smell it too. Then at the end, I have like a very short, hey mama, this is my story. I used to be a really angry, ragey mom. I did not like it. If you want to know more specifically about how I overcame mom rage, here is a link to my story on YouTube. And, or you can text anger too. And I will share with you some of the steps I took in the products that I use that helped me over, you know, helped me regulate my hormones and get my anger under control. And so what, and then in the, in the YouTube video, I also have the same, like in the notes, the same like text anger too. So basically what it comes down to is by the time somebody texts me a keyword and wants to know about the products I'm using, they trust me enough to send me a text and they really want to know what I, what I'm talking about with oils or with products. And so I, they are a very, 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 very warm lead. Okay. They're like smoking hot lead because they are reaching out and I know that they're struggling with something that I have already overcome and I can speak confidently because they are asking me a question and I have the answer. So that's how I use, um, Get Oiling with my leads magnet. I, I do also get their email list and, um, I, I, I don't know. You guys, I'm almost thirty-nine. I love Facebook and I love email. So like, I'm going to have the side part in the skinny jeans evidently because those are Instagram, Instagram and texting, I can totally do it, but what I love is email.
Millennial high five.
Um, so, and you know what? And I do have a lot of younger families that follow us. And when they text me, I'm so happy to hear from them, but I'm going to serve them in what works best for them. Um, but email is just a little, for me, a little, it's one of those, like I'm naturally, it, it's naturally easier for me and takes less time for me. I can communicate with more people in a short amount of time. So, um, but that's how I use Get Oiling and you know, when
Can I show your page? Can I show your page? Can I show your?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Let's, you guys want to see, so this is what Amanda's talking about. So she's using her Facebook page that she's creating and then she'll share content and that's pointing over here. Gorgeous. This is, is this an Ali Deen template?
I love it. Similar. I did it myself, but I, I watched her stuff. Yeah. I, this is what happened. I watched her, um, training with you guys and I was like, well, I love this. And I went and subscribed to Well Style Essentials and, and follow the tutorial. Yeah.
So these are, these are the, the lead magnets that you're talking about. And so they actually, people will click them and they'll go off here and they can download what you're promising. So you're actually making a post on your social media and you're leading them over to this landing page.
Yeah. And, um, just for those of you who were questioning, asking about Instagram, we, when we launched particularly the transforming your triggers. So on Instagram, every single Tuesday, we talk about parenting triggers. Okay. And my people there know on Tuesdays, we're going to talk about it. And so when we, for, I want to say we launched this maybe like the middle of October. And the, the first two weeks before we launched it on Tuesdays, I just started talking about parenting triggers. And people were like, oh my gosh, I thought I was the only one. Or the reason I follow you is because you're so real. Like they, I was getting dozens, this was with not very many followers. Dozens and dozens of messages on Tuesday because people were like, yes, this, this speaks to me. It sings my heart song. And so when my husband and I had our, our, um, lead magnet ready to launch on, on a Tuesday, like we made a post on Facebook and Instagram and like, hey, you guys have been asking for resources. Look what we made for you guys. We're super excited. Um, here's a link to it in our profile, linked in our profile on Instagram. Here's a link on Facebook. And we just had people go and be like, yes, I need this. And so now what is really fun, particularly on Instagram is, I guess about every two weeks, I'll just reshare that post that says like, here's your transform your triggers. If you don't already have it, go download it because it walks you through what I did. And, um, and so people will go and, I mean, every day I get an email from Get Oiling that says you have a new subscriber, you know, to, or you have a, a new download to transform your triggers and how to keep calm. And, you know, that is really, really exciting because those are, those are my people. And you know, those are the people that not only like do I want to serve them, but like it is a joy and an honor and like a life. It is so fulfilling to, to serve and help the people that, you know, that you know, are the people that you're supposed to be serving and helping. That sounds, I don't, I don't know how to say it, but it is, it is such a, an honor, you know, to be able to serve them and to give them help. And you know, when you're helping somebody, I mean, parents, all parents want to be better parents, you know? Like everybody has a goal, like I could, well, hopefully we, you can always be better. But when you inspire people to do that without like you should be better, you know, like, hey, here's what I did. When I recognized I needed to grow in this area, I chose growth over guilt and here's what I did. And people are like, that's what I need to do, you know?
I love it. I love it. So, um, so, so that's what you're doing. And then in terms of keeping people engaged, so they're, they're opting in, I assume somebody is getting a tag on this landing page. And then you have a campaign attached to it.
Oh yeah, I have, I think it's a six, it's a four or six week campaign. Um, and I basically I check in with them and I do send them to my, um, my leads group, prospects group. Our, um, you know, our group for our Facebook page, which they're in there and we check in with, that's an area for growth over guilt and that's something that we're working on right now. Um, they, they get an email from me. A lot of times they will respond to the email. But a lot of times what I have found is that the people that do get emails are also the ones that are very most likely to send me messages in Instagram or a, a Facebook message to our, our public facing page. And so a lot of the di- the dialogue and the conversation still happens on social media. Um, but their prompt to reach out comes when I send them an email. You know, they're like, oh. Um, and you know, one thing, one thing that I provided for him was I made a lock screen with like a mothering mantra, you know? And I just included it in one of my emails to them. And I was like, hey, this is something that I'm working on right now. And, um, and maybe you are too. And if you are, here's something to encourage you. You can hear us how to pop it onto your phone as a background and, and then you'll get the same reminder that I am. Cause this is something that I need reminding of right now.
Excellent. Oh, that is, that is so, so, so cool. So you actually have a, a pretty long campaign attached and you're just really pouring into them. So, um, oh my goodness. So that, that's a lot of effort on the front end, right? To, to create, you know, four, six weeks of, of emails and to have all these pretty downloads and stuff. But I don't know if you guys are noticing here, like there's deep fulfillment. Once these people show up, right? It's connection, it's relationship. Like this is such a beautiful thing.
And my husband is very good at seeing the long game vision and we are, um, thanks to some of Martha's training and other things, like we are working, we are actively like recording, uh, parenting course. Um, and so like we have long-term goals beyond, um, you know, beyond, we would love to have you on our Young Living team. We have enrolled people on our, for our Young Living team, but like we want to serve them in multiple ways. And we have, we are in it for the, the long run. And so I think that when you go in and you're like, I want to do, I mean, we've now, next month will be two years since we launched our page. And we are right now working on the big income, the big, um, income stream outside of Young Living with a parenting course. And so go into it and know like, I have big dreams and big visions and the, this feels like a big step, but it's really one step in a whole process and be willing to embrace the process as well as the progress. Cause I think a lot of times we really focus on like, look at all this progress I made and the process is just like, I had to do that. But I think when you learn to embrace the process and know that you really are serving your people, it, um, that's where that's where it's easier to have patience, especially if you're very goals oriented. I'm very goals oriented and, you know, and have a lot of patience and, and be like, you know what? This is where I'm supposed to be right now on this day and I'm doing what I'm supposed to do today. And yeah.
I love that. It's, it's so infused with meaning and I think that we could all use a little more of that, right? Like, of course you want your check to grow. You want your volume to grow. But in order for that to happen, other things have to happen first. And why not make it something that actually matters deeply to you and it can make a big impact. I love it. Hey, you guys, check the chat. Uh, this page that I'm on right now is where you can find that amazing download that I, I gave you a sneak peek of, uh, where Amanda is giving away. I mean, like it's kind of soup to nuts here and like just everything. And I want to have you back as soon as possible so that we can get into more of the nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys, wave, wave your hand and say, yes, if you want to have Amanda back to get into more of the stuff. Cause we could obviously extend this until, yeah, there's the hands. We got a lot of hands. So we would love to have you back to talk about this. But I, uh, before we wrap up today, I want to make sure you guys know all about the amazing things that are on offer that Amanda has that you guys can get and use, right? Like you're learning how she actually grows her Young Living business and attracts people, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but what if you could actually use some of her tools? That's pretty fun, right? So if you go over to our Get Oiling website, we have a partner section on our homepage. And you can find right here, YL Customer Delight. This is Amanda. And when you head over here, you will see where you have the option to sign up monthly or to sign up annually. So, um, Amanda, could you tell us a little bit about what you offer for your customers of YL Customer Delight who use our Good Oil platform?
So, um, YL Customer Delight is I provide for other Young Living members and, uh, brand partners. Um, this, the exact same customer education that I provide for my team. And I, you know, you guys probably can tell that being focused on service and being focused on other people's, um, heart needs is very important to me. And so when I create content, um, for new newsletters, like a print or email newsletter, and then I have a, a weekly email campaign to check in with my team members. And I have a weekly text campaign and then I have, I think it's really amazing education on the monthly promos every month because I go and do the research on the historical uses of aromatic plants. And so there's a lot that you can say about historical uses. Um, and I provide all of that for my YL Customer Delight members every month. It's fifteen dollars. Um, I will say I get a ton of responses on my texts because most of my texts that I send out to my team members are, are, uh, and what they do end with a question. And it's the same strategy as building your, you know, building your platform. When you ask questions, people genuinely, genuinely and generally want to answer. And so I do get great engagement on my, on my texts when I text them back. And then I, I end my emails with questions frequently as well. Um, so if you want to try that, if you want to go to the website, I know Coach Ashley has shared it and shown it to you. If you just want to get in and see what I have and see if it's a good fit for you, you guys can try it for $1 for your first month. Um, you'll actually get access to everything in the past too, like all of the archives. So you can like go in and explore and see like, you know, maybe some things that I've shared in the past that would be really helpful for you this month. Um, and you can try it for a dollar. The code is GETOILING, all caps, one word, right here where Coach Ashley is showing you right there. And you'll get access to, uh, to all, this is my young, or my Get Oiling vault, by the way. If you're, uh, not sure how to, how to use a vault or what it looks like on the inside, you'll be able to see what it looks like on the inside. And, um, and then I'll get you added to my Facebook group as well and we can connect there. And yeah, that's the very short version. The video will show you too, what stuff looks like.
And yeah, I think for a dollar for your first month, like that's, that's a pretty easy decision.
Yeah.
Sorry. Please continue.
Yeah. And I also wanted to say, if you find me on Facebook, send me a message, um, too, if you have questions and I'll do my best to answer those as well. Yeah.
Wonderful. And you get in her Facebook group. Guys, guys, I hope you are paying attention and taking advantage of this. Head over to GetOilink.com and scroll down and find this page.
And I also, I have an assistant in, um, that works with me with YL Customer Delight. And she is the answer questions about Get Oiling specifically. Cause my, um, my content is available with Get Oiling and also off of Get Oiling. And so when people who use Get Oiling have a question like, hey, how do I, you know, how do I import this? Or this didn't come out looking right. I do have an assistant that her job is to answer the questions about Get Oiling specifically. So those get answered hopefully right away or much more quickly. Cause I have two little boys at home and I don't always get questions answered right away. But for our Get Oiling customers, we do have someone who answers them as quickly as she sees them. And she's a even more skilled at Get Oiling than I am. So that is another service that, that I have in it. That's specifically in our Facebook group.
Wonderful. Thank you. So there's just a couple more questions here and then I want you to just close out with whatever you want to share. Uh, first, uh, Faith is asking, uh, if we're choosing to show the segmented list, this for, for a post, right? Okay. So if we're choosing to show the segmented list, this post, what they aren't usually people we interact with. Will Facebook actually put this post into those feeds?
They should be people that you're interacting with. Yeah. If they, if the segmented list is for your target audience, you should definitely be interacting with them. Go stalk their page, you know, like their posts, put them in your C first. Um, you know, uh, you, I don't even remember how to do it on my phone. You do, you're going to tap on like whatever the little icon is that your friends and you, you can have a default or you can have a don't see at all, or you can have a C first. Put those people in your C first list because you want Facebook to show you their posts. You want to like, you want to comment, you want to love on them, you want to answer questions, you want to be a cheerleader for them. And then when they are in your segmented list, um, yeah, you should totally be interacting with them. Definitely. Yeah.
Excellent. And then, um, there's another, uh, Dorothy, please, uh, in the chat right now, there is a link to the landing page. That's where you can get access to the download. Uh, let me see, go there and grab it. You get, oh my, it's amazing. It's so awesome. It's like a whole workbook that we could do an entire course off of. All right. So Ilka had a question. When you, when you have time one day, we can talk about that. Uh, so is, uh, Ilka asks, is dripping or sharing a little bit of oils info here and there? Has that helped your Young Living business from the group, like specifically dripping oily stuff? Has that, has that helped to grow Young Living for you?
Um, in my Facebook group, I would say maybe, but not on a large scale. Um, but that is because I am not, I'm not an expert. I am not super active in my group. And if you are, you will have more success than I will. I mean, that's the law of how it works. Um, I will say sharing little bits of oily information. information in my Instagram stories is where I have gotten the most on our, on our business page, not on my personal page, but on our Instagram stories is where I've gotten the most interaction and I guess return on my time investment, you might say, because I, I really will just, you know, have my oils in the background or I'll share that, you know, we had to have a family reset because we had a really rough start to our day and we all got a drop of peace and calming and inhaled it and you know, said, you know, spoke blessings over our home and and so people will be like, wait, what's peace and calming? And then I'll get to have a conversation with them and they're like, oh, I've heard about this. Tell me, you know, tell me more. And so, yeah, and let me just say, like, when you have nurtured your prospects and then you get a message and they're like, hey, I want to try oils or you get a message and like, hey, do you have a parenting course? Because I, I need help. I want a parenting course. And you're like, we are actually working on that. Like you know, you know, you're doing what you're supposed to do or hey, do you guys have a Patreon? And I'm like, wait, what's a Patreon? And you go Google and like, we need a Patreon. So when people start asking you for ways to give you money, basically, you know, to pay you for something, you know, you are doing it well. Because they are basically saying like, hey, I want you to take my money. And and you're like, all right, I've got some work to do. If you don't already have those income streams set up or you send them your Young Living link and, and you love on them that way. Yeah.
Amazing, amazing. I hope, I hope you guys are inspired to, I've got a question here about the time. Our, our time did change here, Suzy. We have daylight savings time here in the US. So it is, it is now one fourteen PM. We would normally start, right? Like it's daylight savings. It's okay, Suzy, there is, there's a recording and thank you for joining us from the
Can I say one more thing? Okay, just so you know, for those of you who are going to be brand new to while customer delight, last month I did a class on falling back in love with your starter kit and it was a little bit themed towards Valentine's Day, but it can be used at any time. So if you get in and you're like, I don't know where, what to do. I don't know where to start. Go back to the February archives, get that fall in love with your starter kit information and either post it in your group, in your Facebook group or create it as a text campaign or an email campaign and just start there because you probably know your starter kit really well and you probably have people that maybe have forgotten to use diet guys, you know, when they had a tummy ache and that is an easy tool to use right away that you'll be able to use with confidence.
Fabulous, fabulous. I really hope that you guys are inspired to go out and and share and serve first. Because I think that like, if, if you guys take, take nothing else away from today, please take that download that she's giving you guys. But, but, but importantly, I think Amanda, you are proof positive that if you serve first, the abundance follows, right? If you're, you're giving of your heart first, everything else falls.
I say, connect before you collect, like before you collect the payment from someone, you need to connect with them on like a very deep level.
I hope you guys were listening to that. What? Oh, my God, connect before you collect. Beautiful, beautiful. Excellent. Thank you so much for being here. Please, like, let's, we need to be in touch and talk about next time you come on because absolutely again, and many, many more times. Dorothy, yes, you can share this training with your team members who are not currently with Get Oiling. If they want to join us on a live session like this, GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession. Otherwise you will find this and all of our replays on our YouTube channel, youtube.com/GetOiling. Amanda, we love you so much and we're so grateful for you.
Thank you so much, you guys, for having me and asking me. Thank you, Greg, for asking me.
Yeah, thanks. Today was fantastic. Thanks for sharing all this information.
Yeah, you're so welcome.
Yeah, I had no idea. What a gift, what a gift. Thank you. So, so you guys, send Amanda some love. Go check out while customer delight, use the code GETOILING to get your first one for a dollar. And, you know, get her secrets, guys, because she's clearly got a lot of really good ones to share. So thank you so much and we'll see you guys all next week and hopefully you're back here in this seat soon.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Y'all take care. Bye.
All right, bye.
Bye.